Call the meeting to order, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Councilmember Wilbur is absent. Approval of the agenda, is there any, we've got two changes under action items, we've got seven F, appoint a part-time patrol officer, and seven G, appoint EMT. Is there any other changes, council? Call, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those two changes?
Someone, oh.
Second.
Motion by Joe, second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the February 2nd, 2022 regular meeting. All them, have them in your packet, is there any changes, corrections, or clarification needed on those minutes? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 2nd meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. This brings us to our public open forum, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Public open forum is now closed, we'll move on, we have no public hearings, move on to reports and presentations, six A, Police Department Annual and January 2022 Monthly Report, Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We'll start with the annual report for 2021, I'm sure you've read it through, so I don't have to go word for word, but just want the first page there with the years of experience on the department, which is, I think, pretty impressive for a small department. Then moving on to the second page, we start with the driving under the influence arrests, we had thirty-three arrests this year for driving under the influence compared to thirty-six last year. Four of those DUIs were for controlled substance, and then it's broken down there as you see. And then the busiest month during the year for arrests was July was the busiest, and then May was the second busiest month. Underage drinking, you can see we only had one of those, which seems to be going down. Next page there, we talked about thefts, our thefts were down, we're at eighty-three compared to ninety-four last year, burglaries, down to four compared to twelve last year, domestic assaults, we had fourteen compared to fifteen last year, sexual assaults, we had four, twenty-twenty, we had three assaults, we had seven assaults in twenty and five in twenty-twenty-one, we had one robbery in twenty-twenty-one, arsons were zero. Next page there, traffic violations, pretty comparable each year, gave, less people were driving using their phones, we hammered that pretty hard in twenty-twenty, so it did go down, we did thirty-three last year compared to forty-seven. Speeding tickets, we did give a few more of those out there. And the Minnesota, driving with no Minnesota license, we handed a few more of those out, but we had less revoked drivers, so otherwise pretty comparable stuff. Total accidents, we had eighty-two accident reports compared to eighty-three in twenty-twenty. Assist for other agencies, kind of increase in all the departments, we helped the State Patrol look like increased from one-ten to eighty-five from last year, Stearns County one-forty to one-twenty-eight there. And then warrant arrests, we had fourteen misdemeanor warrant arrests compared to six in twenty-twenty, and the rest were down. Drug arrests, next page there, as you see, all the, quite an increase in all the drug arrests, marijuana there, you see we had two-hundred-and-six-six grams compared to this year, we arrested, we had seventeen-thousand-one-forty-one grams of marijuana, methamphetamine, we had two-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-three grams compared to ten grams in twenty-twenty, cocaine, we had seventy-seven grams compared to eighteen grams in twenty-twenty, heroin, seventy-two grams of that compared to thirteen in twenty-twenty, and hash oil, seventy grams compared to eleven. And we also had twenty-five grams of fentanyl, which is very alarming. Our number of arrests for drug arrests were actually down a lot, but the quantities of what we were finding were more, is what we had there. Then the miscellaneous call page there, if you have questions, you guys be sure to ask, any questions you wish, just kind of looking through it, assist business, if you look at that, we had two-hundred-and-forty-three compared to one-thousand-and-thirty-two. Now, some of these categories got broken up this year in our format for doing door checks, assist business, and other special details, so some of the brackets got broken up more, so that's why some of the numbers are kind of deceiving, like if you look at door checks, we had five-hundred-and-fifty-seven, that was a new category compared to twenty-twenty. And the same with foot patrol, park patrol, we had one-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty compared to zero, you know, in twenty-twenty, so some of the categories were new, so that's why. Otherwise, everything was pretty comparable, I think, if you look at the total ICRs, we had eight-thousand-six-seventy-eight for twenty-twenty-one compared to seven-thousand-nine-fourteen to twenty, and then total offenses of eight-thousand-zero-nine in twenty-twenty-one and eighty-one-hundred for twenty-twenty. So a little increase there. And then the next page, calls for service, that never amazes me how the line never really seems to change much, but the calls per hour, the highest are between nine PM and eleven PM, and then the calls per day are usually Friday, Saturday, the highest, and then the calls per month this year was, looked like July. Now, the next page, the training, twenty-twenty-one, we had a total hours of three-hundred-and-forty-six hours we spent on training done outside our department, the cost of this training was thirteen-thousand-seven-eighty-one, which consisted of ten-thousand-six-fifty-nine in salary, two-thousand-six-fifteen class fees, zero meals, four-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars in transportation, and zero for lodging. Then, of course, our department's part of the patrol courses that we do online, we do one of those, try to do one a month in required classes, so we do those for seven-hundred-and-twenty-dollar fee. Forfeitures, twenty-twenty-one, we retained ten-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars of forfeitures compared to six-thousand-six-zero-three in twenty-twenty. These funds came from four vehicles, all four forfeitures were for alcohol-related offenses, and we had no cash forfeitures. Last paragraph there, the budget, or we can just skip it over it and skip it. Kind of disappointing, the police administrative portion, we were deficit of twenty-four-thousand-seven-fifteen, and the patrol portion of it were deficit of fifty-one-thousand dollars. For an overall, department experienced a deficit of fifty-three-thousand-four-thirty-four, or four-thirty-three, I should say. So looking back through the line items for those reasons, I'll try to explain, but I think for the administrative part, a lot of that deficit, we had at least fifteen-thousand, almost sixteen-thousand over budget for squad cars with the body change style, when the Ford went, skipped two years and changed that body style on us, and when we had our new cars, we had to basically buy all new equipment to make things work and fit in them again, and then the costs elevated here with COVID, so none of that, I just didn't seem to account for the budget for that. And then the patrol part, that's basically personnel with part-time wages, with the personnel that we were out with, one officer that hurt his arm, another officer with retiring and going on work, sick leave, you know, covering him that spot for most of like six months, that really added up to the part-time and full-time overtime wages for that. So that kind of was the cause of that deficit for this year. Again, I want to thank my officers for the great job they've done, and Melissa for putting up with me for another year, and the officers for the good work they do out there, it's a tough year, a lot of scrutiny out there, you know, working, and I think our community has great support for our department, which keeps our morale very high for our department, and I really appreciate our community really backing us up during the times with everything going on in the last couple of years. So again, I want to thank the officers for, with our personnel issues we had, they had to do a lot of moving their shifts around, working a lot more than they usually do, and didn't go unnoticed, is what I'm trying to say, so I appreciate that, and I appreciate the key and administrative staff, the great work they do to help support us all year long, so I want to shout thanks to them. And what else? Oh, we have to do January.
Yep.
January for this year, I lost all the sheets. Some of the numbers we had for January, it looked like we had forty patrols for the school we did, did a hundred-and-six foot patrols, we had twenty-four medicals, twenty-four personal assists, we did fifteen welfare checks, we had twelve unwanted person calls, looks like we did eleven motorists assist, we had sixteen assists this year for that month for the State Patrol for weather-related stuff. And what else, we had twenty-nine citizen contacts, sixteen matter of information calls, for a total of six-hundred-and-fifty-six calls. So a pretty quiet month compared to December, December was at six-eighty-six, and yeah, so down, six-fifty-six from December, so pretty comparable, and quite a bit up though from twenty-twenty-one, when we had four-hundred-and-sixty-five, so. Otherwise, do you guys have questions about the annual report?
Questions, comments?
Chief, I was going to ask you, I know Governor Walz is looking at giving all the essential workers, including police and firefighters, fifteen-hundred dollars for working during the pandemic, do you know if any of our guys are going to get that? They should, they certainly deserve it.
I don't know, can't answer that. They deserve it though.
I know they do, yeah, my son is a corrections officer with Hennepin County, he'll be getting it.
One of the things that I just want to mention is I want to, on behalf of the council, thank the department for everything they've been doing, you know, and through the years that I've been sitting here, you've maintained that budget pretty tight, so one little red mark is going to, Dieter, you know, change my mind as far as how you run things, and it was all stuff that was out of your control anyway, so.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I like to, makes me nervous when it gets.
And budget time will start in a few months, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Ambulance year-end report?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, for the year-end report for twenty-twenty-one, and I'm going to also include the billing report with that, we currently still have twenty-two staff members with our service, and we're still running three ambulances on a pretty regular basis. In twenty-one, we had nine-hundred-and-thirty-three calls, which was our biggest year ever, that the city owned the ambulance service. There was a typo, the canceled calls instead of one-fifty-two was two-thirty. We did have three-hundred-and-fourteen transfers out of that, and Kathy included a list of the canceled no-load patients, those are patients we did not transport to the hospital. Most of them were either falls or car accidents that we got paged out to and they decided not to go in with us. There was a list of hospitals that we went to throughout the two-state area this year, in North Dakota and Minnesota, by far, St. Cal Hospital was the hospital that we transferred out of Sock Center Two. Couple special events on this quarter, and then there's a list, of course, throughout the year, but this quarter, we did a couple football games and then wrestling tournament that we did some standby for. On the mutual aid for this quarter, we had four transfers, excuse me, four assists to the Long Prairie Ambulance Service. And then this quarter also, just the add, we got some transports from hospital to private residences or hospice, those are contracted and paid for by the hospital or hospice. Kathy also included some demographics at the end of her report, see that. On the billing side of the ambulance service, we billed out six-hundred-and-ninety-eight patients, which totaled eight-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars worth of ambulance or patient fees. And then we collected four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-five-four-eight-fifty-one on that, a good majority of those collections are still at the billing company, you can see that there was a little bit of a decrease, I am working with the billing company to explain why there was such a decrease, he has not got back to me on that, but we are on top of things. I did include a list of what we collected or how they were collected, of course, the majority was through our billing company that we contract with, the others are revenue capture collections, and then the hospital fees. We did adjust two-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-nine-sixty-seven dollars and one cent, those are Medicare/Medicaid fees that are federally mandated to write off, so I think there's an action item later on. And then with the return files that we did receive back from our billing company, those are the files that are unable to be collected, I included where they went, the majority goes into revenue capture, so we capture people's tax returns with that. And then on the bottom, you can see that our billing company has a considerable amount of files open, four-hundred-and-forty-three files that are still open with a considerable amount of money that they're still trying to collect, so. And I just want to add that we did make our budget. So anyway, if there's any questions, I'd like to answer.
Any questions? The only comment I got to that is, I didn't, I was going to say more about, we forgive him on his red mark, but I didn't want to open it up to the other departments thinking they were going to get a free ride, so.
Thank you.
But, thank you. Fire Department Annual Report?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Jeff Roman, Jingle, Sock Center Fire Department Assistant Chief, see you could not make it tonight, so. Officer Wolf, for the ambulance report for two thousand twenty-one, response calls, we had twenty more calls compared to the year before, a hundred-and-thirty-four to a hundred-and-fourteen. Of those calls, ten were structured fires, sixteen were grass fires, thirty-one were rescue medical, twenty-seven were vehicle accidents and fires, ten for gas smoke and alarm calls, thirty-two were canceled calls, which was probably one that was up the most, and then eight service calls, and that was due to a lot of storms this past year, so. Response calls billed out was seventeen-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty dollars, response calls received, and that was from two thousand twenty, was two-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Response calls received from two thousand twenty-one was eleven-thousand-two-hundred, unpaid was four-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty dollars, and collection of write-offs was three-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. Grants and reimbursements, donations, Sock Center Fiber Leaf, we donated a hundred-and-seven thousand dollars, Mike and Nancy Noah, a hundred dollars, Westbrook A Power was fifty dollars, Lacko Wind LLC was a thousand, and Minnesota National Bank, seven-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars. So a total of a hundred-and-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars, and we donate. We had two firefighters retired in two thousand twenty-one, zero firefighters were hired in two thousand twenty-one, and this year we are currently in the hiring process, so. Any questions?
Okay, any questions? We won't need to get into the township breakdown or anything like that, that's a pretty busy document, so. No questions, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Public Works Department?
Evening, Mayor and Council, Public Works Department report for the last month, the airport hanger strap project is completed, we assisted with final cleaning and placement of the safety signs, we also did snow and ice removal around the hangar several times to remove the large ice dams that were forming by the doorways, we also did removal of snow around the runway lights, and we used the blower to blow back snowbanks along the runway and around the airport. We did have to order more avgas, and due to increased cost for fuel, an increase will be made to the cost at the airport. We completed a full service inspection on the airport courtesy vehicle this month. At the arena, we had a second issue with the compressor system, two of the four compressors are not operational right now due to an R-22 leak in the system, second time this has happened. It will work fine on two compressors the remainder of the season, but this will need to be repaired, we have two weeks left, and the association will utilize their contracted hours, and this is the final year of the contract with the city and the hockey association and the high school, so discussions will begin taking place on a new contract with that this spring. We repaired some dock sections that sustained storm damage over the summer, oil changes on a few pieces of equipment that were due and completed, outdoor rink, continue to maintain the ice, but with the sun having more power this time of the year, the ice has started to melt on the north end of the hockey rink on a daily basis and the figure skating rink. We hope to be able to utilize this for about another week, likely after that, it won't be able to be skated on due to being too soft. Several snow events this past month that we cleaned up, and then we had to make some repairs to some doors in the fire department. Any questions I can answer?
Questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Action items, seven A, approve ambulance department annual adjustments.
So this is what Tim had referred to, every year we have to reduce our billing by the Medicare and Medicaid write-offs, and the amount this year is two-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and one cent. So what we're looking to is to approve the ambulance billing adjustment in that amount.
Just two-seventy-six, nine-sixty-seven?
Right.
Okay, you said seventy-six.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's fine, I just.
Dyslexia today.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the billing adjustment?
You approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven B, approve resolution twenty-two-two-dash-sixteen authorizing bids for the twenty-twenty-two crack filling.
According to our ongoing street maintenance plan, we have several streets in need of crack filling prior to seal coating, the areas are shown on the attached detail, and they include roads that were in phase one of the twenty-eighteen public improvement project, that was the hospital area, which includes Main Street North, Fourth Street North, Oak Street North, and Fifth Street North, and then all roads east of Sock River in Morningview and East River Heights we're looking at, so everything east of the river, and also Fourth Street North, which is from Main Street going east to Heritage Lane, so those are all areas that were paved in recent years that now we're looking to crack fill, and then the second part will be seal coat, that's resolution twenty-two-two-dash-sixteen advertising for bids for the crack filling project, we have the bids open until eleven o'clock on the fourteenth of March, so we're looking to have it back in front of the city council the second meeting in March. So we're looking for approval of resolution twenty-two-dash-sixteen advertising for bids for the crack filling project.
Comments, questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-two-dash-sixteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven C, approve resolution twenty-two-two-dash-seventeen authorizing bids for the twenty-twenty-two seal coating.
This is basically ditto for the crack filling, it is all the same streets, we just, they would crack fill first and come back with a chip seal, seal coat, and that also is for that same bid opening date of March fourteenth at eleven o'clock, and it's resolution twenty-two-two-dash-seventeen advertising for bids for the twenty-twenty-two seal coat project.
Comments, questions? Ben, basically on the crack filling, we had tried that new type of crack filling or seal coat, wasn't it, about a year ago?
On the seal coat.
On the seal coat? Okay, instead of P-Rot, okay, I knew that we had changed something, so that's basically what we're doing again, okay. Any other questions?
Just as I'm looking, thinking back to the huge twenty, what was it, twenty-twenty project, twenty-nineteen project, is this, was this expected maintenance for these areas on the north end, I mean, didn't these roads just get paved?
We paved them in two thousand eighteen.
Is that typical to have to do crack fill and seal coating four years later, three years later?
Just to keep them.
It is, okay.
It's putting sunscreen on the roads.
That's what I'm wondering, okay.
It'll preserve the oil and preserve the life of them longer. It used to be ten years was standard, then seven years was standard, now it's more like four or three years is standard.
Typical for most things.
Right, that's about the only way you can get that forty-year life that we expect out of them is by doing this, so. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-two-dash-seventeen?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven D, approve resolution twenty-two-two-dash-eighteen authorizing bids for twenty-twenty-two conservation park upgrades.
So as you recall, the city had received some considerable contributions to be allocated towards some upgrades to the conservation park, so the bid specs were needed for, or excuse me, for needed repairs and upgrades were prepared and to review, they include the shelter, some LED lighting, a shelter liner steel and pole wrap, restroom epoxy flooring, new wall panels in the restrooms, new fixtures in the restrooms, LED lighting. epoxy flooring, new wall panels in the restrooms, new fixtures in the restrooms, LED lighting inside the restrooms and outside the door, and steel entry doors. So this is upgrades to the shelter at Conservation Park, which is the one below the dam. And I did include you the, the specs for you to look at, and also the maps and the drawings if you have any questions on those, and we are looking to have this work hopefully completed by August of 2022. So that's kind of our timeframe to allow for some time for people to get their supplies and materials, and our bids are due back by March 22nd at 11:00 a.m. So then we'll have time to go through those. So they'll actually be on the council at the first meeting in April is what our expectation is. So we're looking to approve resolution 2022-18 authorizing the advertisement for bids for the Conservation Park upgrade project.
Questions? Concerns? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2022-18?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane.
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven E, temporary street closure application.
So we received two applications for street closures, and these overlap each other because one of the streets is in the county, so that's why there's two. What they are is for the Five Ten Art Lab for a chalk and sock festival, which is from noon on Friday, June 24th till 5:00 p.m. on Sunday, June 26th. So they're looking to close Sinclair Lewis Avenue from Main Street to just west of Oak and Sinclair Lewis Avenue intersection, which is down here by the parking lot on the corner, and then closing Oak Street from Second Street to Fourth Street. So out here in front of City Hall down to Second Street. So that's kind of like a T that they're requesting that it can be closed for, and this is for the chalk and sock event, and you do have the map in your packet. They're gonna have like food tricks on one section of it, and then they're gonna have the chalk art on Oak Street and then, or on Oak Street north of Sinclair Lewis Avenue, and then also on Sinclair Lewis Avenue. And they did propose a detour, which is Sinclair to Elm Street. So they would drop down to Fourth Street at Elm, here just west of City Hall, to get out to me.
Questions? Comments?
Aren't we limited on how many times we can have a closure? Per year?
No, we changed that.
We did, okay.
At the meeting, you were missing.
Okay. That makes sense, then.
One of the, one of the concerns I got is that's three days. I'm not certain, I guess the county could, but I don't see them closing Sinclair Lewis for three days.
We actually checked the county, and the county's gonna defer to us.
Oh, they are?
Yep.
Okay. The other concern I had was we got Second Street construction going on, and depending on where the contractor is, how are we gonna, are we limiting traffic to get around the block to, say Frederick's Oil with warehouse trucks and tanker truck? Because everything else past that point is no truck zone. So if we close that off for three days, how are they gonna get delivery in?
They'd probably have to come in Park Road and then up Oak and on to Second. If that's what you're thinking of how the.
Yeah, but you know, if Second Street is tore up, you know, you take a semi through a construction zone, it's not the easiest thing in the world.
Is it timed, framed each day or all consecutive?
It's consecutive.
Straight through.
Straight through?
Because the artists are gonna chalk the street, so they don't wanna drive on that. They're gonna be doing their chalk event and everything, and then they'll have it open for spectators to come and look at it.
So noon the 24th, the Friday?
Yeah.
All day Saturday. Ends at five on Sunday.
Yes. That is the proposal.
That's a lot.
The one other concern, one of the ideas that I had mentioned to Vicky before when it first came up was rather than close Oak Street north of Sinclair Lewis Avenue down to Second Street, if we couldn't just vacate that parking lot and let them use that parking lot instead. The square footage, I don't know if it's gonna be about the same, or maybe it's too small. I don't know. To me, it was another option, rather than closing off a street. So I don't know what you guys think.
I think, I think part of the reason for using that part of Oak Street is its newer pavement, so it's nicer, less cracks, less, but she was going to be here tonight, something came up that she couldn't be, so I'm trying to answer the questions for her.
Right. No, it's a great idea, and it's a city event, but I just, I don't know, closing that area off for three days continuous, I don't know.
Well, and I expect, I expect probably another request for the Downtown Car Show, then again in July, and then, you know?
The street dance.
And then the Fall Art Fest, the, yeah. I would like to explore, I get that the Five Ten Art Lab wants to keep it in a location that is in close proximity to their business and kind of highlight their business as well. It'd be nice to explore other areas, but it does seem a little excessive for three days.
You, Heidi. I think three days is a long time.
Did the, the county said that they would consider it, or?
Yeah, they said that they would go with what we recommend.
Okay, so they threw it in our lap. I was basically thinking, let's hand it to the county, let them say yes or no, and we'll decide what we're gonna do with our streets after they say yes, but. Brian, you got any thoughts?
I would just say that it seemed like quite a, I think.
I don't know, is it gonna, well, of course, it's only chalk, so if we need to for emergency vehicles, we can just go over the top of it, but you still gotta move barricades.
Yeah, you got barricades, you potentially have people in that area too, trying to respond, large crowds.
So what's?
I love the idea. I don't wanna limit the, you know, keep them from moving forward with it. Was there reasoning behind Pam requesting this length of, I understand how long it takes for, you know, this type of artwork to be done, so I'm assuming they've done research and gotten suggestions on how long this would take or timeframe it would require.
Yeah, there's, there's people like from out of state that are coming to do this, and they recommended that this is how much time they need to get it all in place, and then you'll have that last time period for people to come and view it, you know, so I don't know how long it takes either. I think, I think they're just gonna be out there, I think, I think they're all gonna be different, depending on who, who is doing it. Some are gonna be more complex, and some are gonna be more simple, so they're just gonna give each artist an area that they're gonna be doing their art.
Has she got a list of artists already that said they'd come? She does?
They're, they're, they're working on this quite readily.
What I, what I'm getting at is if all of a sudden they're expecting this many, and then all of a sudden they only get half as many, then maybe we can open up one of them streets, change, change it later, if she like gives us enough head notice, rather than close the whole thing off and then find out they only got enough people.
You mean shrink it?
Yeah. We just shrink the, shrink it down a little bit after they get a more solid idea of how many artists they get.
And then, another question on top of that is, are the food trucks planned for only one portion of the event? If they're gonna be on a specific end of it, can we keep just the, the area that they need for the art to be open, but then close off the other portion they're requesting for the food trucks?
I can, I can talk to her about that. You know, they just wanted to, you know, they were waiting for us to get the city code amended to apply for this, but they wanted to get this taken care of as soon as possible so they can lock in all their artists.
Yeah.
I think we have to make sure we have suitable barricades. We've got a lot of hot, um, and really shut down.
Well, I was thinking we almost gotta go to the cement barricade type, bring them in, them three-foot tall ones or whatever, but then. Wow, they're too easy to move.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So.
Do we have time to table this and still allow?
That, I don't know. I guess if you do table it, I guess they don't have a choice but to come back in two weeks.
Well, it's, yeah, it's two weeks, I mean, to the day since we've got.
It's June 24th.
Yeah, and we got March 2nd for a meeting.
So if we could, you know, if we wanna table it until we have Shallen here, because he's also part of the CVB board, so I don't know if they are involved in this either.
Yeah, well, we could table it and do our due diligence more, explore other options to, you know, find a way to make it work for them and make it feasible for the city and, and everybody.
Yeah.
And give Pam an opportunity to maybe attend.
General consensus, just to table this, or do you need a motion, Vicky?
That's fine, I'll, I'll talk to her tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Seven F, appoint part-time patrol officer.
Okay, as a result of our advertisement for the part-time patrol officer, we received an application from Preston Otterer for the position. I'm not sure if that's how I pronounce it. He's currently a full-time officer with the Osageus Department and would work for Sauk Center to fill in for vacations, et cetera. The appointment should be effective upon successful passage of a background check, so we're looking to appoint Preston Otterer as a part-time patrol officer at step one of the pay scale.
Questions? Comments?
Seems we're adopting a lot of the police officers from Osageus. Do they have any left up there?
No.
The chief is it.
Okay. Do I have a motion to appoint Preston?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane.
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven G, appoint EMT.
Catherine Struford has requested the appointment of Aaron Felton to the ambulance service. He served with our service from 2008 to 2017. She's recommending he be given credit for prior service and would start at level two. So we're looking to appoint Aaron Felton as an EMT at EMT level two.
Questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to appoint Aaron.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Heidi, second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Unfinished business quotes on the doc?
A couple items of unfinished business. The doc quotes, this is for the day-use doc. I sent out requests for quotes, and it had been advertised and submitted to various vendors, known to sell these items. We're hoping to have the quotes in front of the city council on March 2nd, and this was to extend the day-use doc out another 12 feet, and then have two more extensions off the side, each 16 feet long. So we'll see what kind of bids we get back on that. On our 2022 project, the bids are out for the 2022 street reconstruction project has been advertised. Keith said, I think we have eight or 10 plan holders, and we'll be opening bids 24th, I think it is, of February. And the Trunk Highway 71 reconstruction project, I had a, a meeting with MINDOT last Monday. They are gonna be coming in front of the city council sometime, probably in June, to present kind of a preliminary, not really a design, but more of a, more of the concept of how it's all gonna look, where the sidewalks and trails and ped ramps and, and how they're gonna do the intersection on the north end. And so they're looking at coming in front of the council in June, unless their COVID protocol makes them do it remotely, then I said we would set up a PowerPoint and link them in through a laptop so they can show it to you. And so currently, it's MINDOT's 2026 fiscal year, which is start of July 1st, 2025 for us. So that's kind of the schedule it's on right now. They did say that the legislature has told them to balance their budget, and so they do have some projects they're gonna push, and, but after I talked to her, I don't believe we'll be one that's pushed out further. I'm not positive, but we had a good conversation about some of the things that we expect to see, which would include, at the four-way stop at Holiday, it will include sidewalk connection down to McDonald's and over to Caribou, and that whole intersection, taking care of that, possibly a right-turn lane there by Holiday where people back up trying to head west, and the change of the intersection on the north end, so, and then also a nice wide path to get over the bridge. So there's some good features, I think, that are coming in it based on the amount of space that they have to work in. And then we had Keith send them kind of a drawing of where we're expecting to work on our infrastructure, because they're trying to figure one-year, two-year, and I think it's probably gonna be a two-year project now, looking at the scope of our project. So all those things are factoring into it, and so, once I get that meeting scheduled, I will let you know. Hopefully, it'll be in person, and she'll be able to have a good conversation, otherwise we'll remote her in. And so we're still on track to get working on that project, so. It's good.
What's that? Okay. Any questions about any of that? We have no new business. We'll move on to consent agenda. We have a schedule of claims, unpaid claims of one hundred and forty-seven thousand, eighty-one dollars and seventy cents for a total of the same amount. January checks, paid claims payroll of one million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twelve cents. We also have Sauk Center Youth Hockey Association has submitted an application and permit for a one-day temporary on-sale liquor license for a beer and wine event at Sauk Center Civic Arena on March 26th. The fee and the certificate of insurance is being provided. Do you have any questions about the consent calendar? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Informational items?
Just the one thing to make sure to get on your calendar, the Board of Appeal and Equalization meeting, where the residents can come and talk about their value for next year, is April 11th at 1:00 p.m. Scheduled this year to be in person, so we'll kind of be back to that again, where they'll actually come here to City Hall rather than doing it online. So just get that on your calendar.
And one person on the, that's present has to be?
Right. The people that have trained, but I've got several of you, so we're good.
Okay, good. And then from there, we will be going into closed session, so we will recess the regular meeting and go into closed session. We just ended our closed session. We are back into regular session of the council meeting. We have directed staff to enter into a letter of intent on the purchase of real estate. With that said, do we have, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.